I'm going to call to order this meeting of the Board of Supervisors. It's Thursday, November 2nd, 2017, and it's about 8:30 a.m. And we're at the Community Center in the Sierra Room at 851 East Williams Street. Sue, will you call the roll?
Sure. Good morning. Supervisor Bonkowski.
Yes.
Supervisor Barrett.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Aboud.
Yes.
We have a call.
And I'd just like to say that Supervisor Bagwell and Mayor Bob Crowell are with a group of elected officials backing Washington DC, hopefully doing some good work for us. So now I'd like to call on Bruce Henderson from the Airport Road Church of Christ to lead us in the invocation.
Our Father, we thank you for today. What a beautiful morning, crispy and colorful and bright. Our board isn't full today, Lord, but we've got a full agenda. And we ask for that same flavor of color and excitement as we talk about finances and road maintenance and sewers and all the things that we have to do. But I ask, Father, that as we discuss things and as we make decisions, that we'll remember the people that we represent. We thank you, we praise you, and we ask that the beauty of this day be reflected in our lives. We pray in the name of our Lord. Amen.
Now can I ask Chloe and Peter Woodbury to come up and lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You did a great job. Moving on now to public comment, is there any member of the public that would like to say something at this time?
Good morning, Supervisors. Matthew Lawton, Carson City Public Works. I just wanted to make a brief announcement regarding an event that's upcoming for GIS Day. GIS is Geographic Information Systems. And GIS Day is an event that was started back in 1999 by the software company ESRI, and it's since become part of Geography Awareness Week, which is something that was put together by the National Geographic Society. The purpose of GIS Day is to raise awareness of geography and the use of GIS technology. And I'm pleased to announce that we're going to host a GIS Day event here in Carson City. It will be on Wednesday, November 15th, from 9:00 a.m. to noon, right here in the Sierra Room at the Community Center. It's going to be a gathering of GIS professionals for the region, and they're going to present on projects that they have performed that use GIS. We anticipate that we'll have members from the private sector, government, academia, nonprofits, and of course, the public are welcome to attend as well. So we are looking forward to this event, and I appreciate the time, and happy GIS Day to you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Brad.
It's good to know. Is there any other public comment?
Good morning. My name is Chloe Woodbury, and I am the President of the Fort Churchill Society, Children of the American Revolution. The CAR was formed in 1895 to instill patriotic values in the youth of America. The mission of the CAR is to train good citizens, develop leaders, and promote love of the United States of America and its heritage among young people. All of our members have traced their genealogy back to an ancestor who served in the Revolutionary War. Each CAR state president has a state project. Last year, as state president, my project was honoring Old Glory with a goal to place American flag retirement bins in communities around Nevada. Three flag retirement bins were placed in Carson City in August 2016. Since then, we have collected more than 2,000 American flags in need of retirement. And now I welcome the state president of the Nevada State Society, Children of the American Revolution, Peter Woodbury.
Thank you, Chloe. In my term as state president of Nevada CAR, we have continued the important work of honoring Old Glory. Six flag retirement bins have been located in Nevada. And we have even more exciting news to share with you. The CAR and the Bible and Chapter Dars of the American Revolution have partnered with Carson City to sponsor a community flag retirement ceremony on Friday, November 10th, at Fuji Park. We will be joined by the Carson High School Naval JRO TC Color Guard Veteran Groups and local elected officials. We hope you will consider joining us as we pay our respects to these flags and then retire them through a giant pyre. Thank you, citizens of Carson City, for your support for our project and for endorsing the retirement of these flags to us. For everyone watching the meeting today, please remember we have three flag retirement bins in Carson City at the library, City Hall, and the Carson Flag Store. Please use these flag retirement bins to ensure your American flag is properly retired. Please consider attending our community flag retirement ceremony at 3:00 p.m. on Friday, November 10th, at Fuji Park in Carson City. Thank you.
Thank you, Chloe and Peter, and thank you for setting such a great example. Is there any other public comment? Seeing none, move on to item number six, Approval of the Minutes for October 5th, 2017. John?
There we go. Alrighty. I move that the minutes of October 5th, 2017 be accepted and approved.
And I believe there's a correction that was submitted.
Oh, is there? Yes, a correction. It's already been submitted? Okay, good. Yes, with the correction.
I'll second that. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? And one abstention. Brad wasn't here. Okay. Onto item number seven, Adoption of the Agenda. Manager, is there any changes to the agenda?
Yes, ma'am, we do. Item 15A, which is the lease agreement between us and the Truckee Meadows Parks Foundation, we're going to delay that until the November 16th meeting.
It's 14A.
I'm sorry, 14A. And I got a little ahead of myself. Item 15A, which is the second reading of the ordinance, that would be the development agreement between the city and the Lumper Ranch Development, we're going to delay that one meeting as well.
All right, then. So we will adopt the agenda with the elimination of items 14A and 15A, which will be put on to another meeting.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. All right, on to the Consent Agenda. Any members of the board wish to pull anything from the Consent Agenda? Do I have a motion?
I move to approve the consent agenda consisting of all items under number eight, nine, and 10 on the agenda.
Second.
Aye? Opposed? Passes. All right.
You know what? I have one correction, my apologies, but we also had a late request to pull the Airport Authority item, which is coming up next. That'll probably go in December as opposed to the November 16th meeting. So my apologies on that.
So with that, we will move on to item 13A. And so Linda, are you going to take us through this? Laura, excuse me.
Laura Rader, Purchasing and Contracts. This is to approve the purchase of 25 vehicles for several departments, excuse me, from Michael Hole and Capital Ford through the state and Nevada's competitive bid, an NJPA Cooperative Agreement for a total not to exceed amount of $982,561.17. And we've provided a pretty extensive background if there's any questions. Zack is here.
All of these items were budgeted and planned for?
Yes, they were.
Okay. And it's nice to see that most of these are being purchased through local businesses.
Yes.
Any other board comment? Any public comment on this issue? Seeing none, then I'll bring it back to the board for motion.
I move to approve the purchase of 25 vehicles from multiple departments for the city of Carson, from Michael Hole Motor Company and Capital Ford through the state and Nevada's competitive bid list, and NJPA Cooperative Purchasing Agreement for a total not to exceed amount of $982,561.17.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. This is on Schultz Ranch. Lee, are you going to walk us through this?
Yeah, good morning. Lee Plamow, Community Development Director, Susan prepared this staff report and amendment. This is for Act to Approve an Ordinance on the Second Amendment to the Development Agreement for Schultz Ranch between Carson City, Lenar Reno LLC, and Ryder Homes. So basically, between the city and the developers of the Schultz Ranch property. This amendment is to change the requirement to complete the central neighborhood park located in Phase 3 from the current number of 210 units to 250 units. The applicant is here to, or the representative of the developers are here to make the argument for that and explain a little bit more besides what's in the staff report. Of course, the staff report explains the need for this. This went to the Parks and Rec Commission on October 3rd, and the Parks and Rec Commission voted unanimously 6-0 to make this amendment. I think that the staff reports include it, so I'll leave it with that. And again, the applicants here can explain the issues more related to that.
Any board questions?
Yeah, we received a letter from the superintendent asking that we not do this, and I should be able to figure this out, but could you inform me, was that letter received before the Parks and Rec Commission or the after?
Yeah, on the last couple pages of the packet is a letter from mid-late August from the school district, expressing concern about the pace of growth that's going on out there, and recommending that this amendment not be made, that they don't think we should encourage the increased pace of growth, basically. I spoke to the, so this was written before the Parks and Rec Commission meeting. I actually spoke to Mr. Stokes since then, reminded him of this letter in here, and he reiterated, he says he understands that the Parks and Rec Commission, he said they wouldn't be here tonight, but they still, they're standing by the position of the letter that's in there, that they would prefer that the park still be built on the 210th, not the 250th.
Just to be clear, this is not increasing the growth in Carson City, it's just allowing the park construction to be completed and not shut the construction crews down. The park is currently in design, and the design is almost finished, but to finish the design, start construction, and complete construction will take until approximately September, which would exceed the 210th building permit. So it's not a matter of any accelerated growth, it's continuing the growth and not shutting down several construction crews while the park's actually being constructed. Either way, the park gets built, it's just in September, so I don't really have an issue with this.
And Jennifer Budge from the Parks and Recreation Department is here too, if you have any specific questions about where it is exactly the park is in the process of being designed.
I'd like to ask Representative for Schultz Ranch first, and then Jennifer to come up next to just elaborate.
Chris Baker with Manhart Consulting, for the record. Yeah, again, I think Brad kind of nailed this. This is realistically just kind of a fail-safe. What's happening now is we're around the 120th building permit, but at the time of the request, we were at 105. So if you kind of did the math out, there was a potential for us to miss that mark. And the truth is, is in the development climate now, once you lose your subs, you're not going to get them back in a timely fashion. So we were preparing to realistically prevent a halt in development. We still could meet that 210th number, but again, to prepare, and the way the park's timing is working is if we went forward now, we would have to build the park over the winter, and that could present some problems. So, you know, working with parks and the city, the plan was to break ground in spring. We've got 90% plans pretty much done, and we've been going back and forth. I mean, we're at the point where we're picking fixtures and bathrooms and colors of playground tiles and park equipment. So as far as the overall design, that's not going to change. Again, we're just looking forward to, with the absorption rates that are moving now and the development momentum we have, we don't want to lose that. So, you know, we're just trying to put this forward to ensure that we don't.
Just a comment, Chris. Just, you know, going forward with this project, if you can take into account the absorption rates and maybe try to plan a little farther in advance so that we don't have to bring this to the board level. Duly noted.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Jen, do you want to elaborate just a little bit more on the development of the parks?
Thank you, Board. Jennifer Budge, Parks and Recreation Director. We've been, had a great cooperative relationship with the developer, they've been wonderful. They've met all of their deadlines, we're already, as Chris said, at 90% with park design. We're, you know, finalizing all the details. My preference is to break ground in the spring and not do winter construction, that can cause additional problems. Not that that really factors in to the count for the subdivision and the triggers with that, but they've been wonderful, they've been meeting all of their deadlines. We'll still see that park move forward and open next year, which is great, and a benefit for that neighborhood and for the community.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Chris?
Can I add one more comment? And again, regards to the school district's letter, this isn't accelerating growth by any means. It doesn't mean these units are going to be occupied. This isn't in relation to C of Os. This is just so we can have the building permits in place, so we can, you know, move forward with the buildings. You know, realistically, as far as occupying units, this really won't change the timing of any of that.
Thank you. Any other public comment on this issue? Seeing none, then I'll bring it back to the board.
Bill number 128.
I move to introduce on first reading, Bill Number 128, An Ordinance Approving the Second Amendment to the Development Agreement for Schultz Ranch between Carson City, Lenar Reno LLC, and Ryder Duda Carson LLC. On the APN's published in the agenda, to change the requirement to complete the central neighborhood parks located in Phase 3 to before the issuance of the 250th building permit.
Motion and a second. All those in favor? Aye? Opposed?
Want to talk?
John?
Yeah, I just want to say that the Parks and Recreation Commission vote and the Parks and Rec Director's testimony brings me to support this. I do although want to note that we bent over backwards in the lump agreement that isn't before us today, but will be in two weeks, to help the school district. And I took into consideration the superintendent's letter. However, you've allayed my concerns regarding that, so I will vote for this.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. Onto item 16A, and before we get started on that, I have a disclosure. NRS 281A 420 requires me to disclose a conflict of interest and abstain from participating when I have a disqualifying conflict. Through my official position as a supervisor, I serve on the Culture and Tourism Authority. Both the Board of Supervisors and the CTA are public bodies for which I have a responsibility as a public officer to represent my constituents and vote on matters of public importance unless a clear conflict outweighs that duty. In this case, a reasonable person in my position would not be materially affected by this public relationship I have with the CTA. Therefore, I will be participating in this matter. Any other disclosures? Seeing none. Who is going to present this today? Nancy?
Good morning. This item is to update the Agreement for Administrative Services and Facility Use and Management with the Carson City Culture and Tourism Authority, formerly known as the Carson City Convention and Visitors Bureau and the Carson City Visitors Bureau. This agreement was originally entered into in September of 2013. So the Parks and Recreation Services have been updated to add additional facilities to the agreement, as well as setting the guidelines for the maximum number and the priority of endorsed events at specific city facilities. And a list of the endorsed events is outlined in Exhibit A in your packet. So in addition to that, we've added, sections have been added to address the services to be provided by the city's Public Works Department and the Community Development Department, as well as the city's District Attorney's Office. In exchange for these services, the city will receive 1% of the 11% transient lodging tax, and that's approximately $187,000 annually. Of that amount, $90,000 to $100,000 will be used to cover the cost of the endorsed annual events, with the remaining balance allocated to administrative services. And we have this agreement, it'll remain in effect until June 30th of 2019.
Nancy, is there any board questions or comments on this issue? Brad?
Nancy, can we talk a little bit about the method of payment, which is item 12 on page eight? To pay the city an amount equal to 1% of the total 11% transient lodging tax rate monthly. To me, it makes sense to be able to direct bill costs and then be reimbursed for those. And the city manager and I had some conversation about this. Can you just explain why we're taking a percentage rather than direct billing and paying the actual cost? Or maybe Nick, you want to handle it?
Yeah, I'm not sure how we...
Do you want me to?
Yeah.
So, and I'm going to ask Jen Budge to come up here as well, just to, don't worry, Jen, I'll set you up for it. Not, not set you up. I will...
Tee you up.
Tee you up, thank you. Much better. Word. So we actually have very good data for what our sports tourism program costs in terms of direct and indirect costs. Parks and Rec does a very comprehensive job of actually tracking all of those costs. So if you look at the other city departments, the CFO, the District Attorney, the city manager's office, all of those others, HR, thank you, all those other time that city staff spends on the Culture and Tourism Authority, both their agenda items, as well as just, you know, the daily support. Our contracts administrator, for example, does all the contracting for the Culture and Tourism Authority. So we'd be in a position where we would either have to track hours and then do direct billing, not unlike an attorney or some other professional services firm would do that. It's not worth the record-keeping to do that. The biggest department in terms of interface with the Culture and Tourism Authority is Parks and Rec. That's why I teed up Jen here, because they do track both the direct and indirect costs of putting on what's mainly the sports tourism program that the CTA runs. More, I mean, if you also look at the Carson City Off-Road, that's a collaborative support from all city departments. But if you kind of just look at the breadth of this inter-local agreement, it really is Parks and Rec. You may or may not have anything you want to add to that, Jen, but go ahead if you do.
Thank you, Jennifer Budge, Parks and Recreation Director. We already do that. As the city manager said, we track everything, just like we would a grant. So if we were to go back and even kind of audit this relationship with the Culture and Tourism Authority, we would be able to do that. And we track down to inmate support, seasonal support, part-time help, our equipment costs, with the exception of unclassified time. I do have to coordinate with them and some other of the unclassified staff, but as you'll see in the agreement, that's just sort of, you know, our contribution, because it's a little bit more difficult to track, you know, as the manager said. But we are able to do right down to that, and that's what we bill back to that account is our actual cost. So we don't, as the Parks Department, don't go off that percentage. I know that's the arrangement on the overall umbrella agreement, and that's for your direction, but that really doesn't impact us either way, because we already, we already go with the actual.
So we're comfortable that the 1% is meeting or exceeding our actual hard costs?
It is on the park side. I can't speak for the other departments, but we're trending to be closer to $100,000 toward that reimbursement or bill back, if you will, for parks. And you'll see that that endorsement list has grown. Like recently, we added the Powwow to that annual endorsed event that wasn't there before, that is a three-day event. It did involve a lot of staff time and materials, so that is trending up. So as long as that remainder can reimburse the rest of the departments, I think would be the question.
Which should be, the total should be between $170,000 and $180,000?
Yes, that's what we're projecting. I think the last full year was $160,000. Is that correct?
$187,000 for '17.
For '17. So again, as our room tax revenue grows, as the night count of people staying here in Carson City increases, that number will increase. If you look at our hard costs to get it, what I think you're getting at, Supervisor, you're probably looking at a direct hard cost of about $130,000. The other is accounting for city staff's time, District Attorney, HR, finance, city manager. So, but if you look at the direct costs of implementing the program, it's probably in that $130,000 range. So $187,000 with, again, if you take the salaries out, which we do bill salary, we do bill time to each one of these different projects, if you take that out of it, then I think you're left with about 130 of direct hard cost.
Great, thank you. And then just below that on the same page, page eight, where it says it is further agreed under item two, I would like to propose some additional language. Currently, it reads, "Either party may terminate this agreement without cause upon 60 days' written notice to the other party. Each party agrees to perform their respective duties hereunder until the date of termination." I would propose to add this third line, "All contractual obligations for scheduled events shall survive any termination." Because we may have events that are scheduled out more than 30 days. than 30 days.
Good addition. I'll second that if that's motion on an amendment.
John, did you have questions? And Brad, are you all through? Okay.
No, I think you covered, and I think you covered them pretty well, although I would ask the general question. What I hear you saying, it seems to me, both of you, is that, well, our commitment to this is growing in this community, our revenues are also growing at the same time, and you think it's covering it, right?
I do.
And I'd just like to say, from the Tourism Authority aspect, wearing that hat, I know these discussions have been had at this level, and we're always looking to those costs and looking to Parks and Rec and the city, and will, of course, adjust as we grow.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Jennifer Budge, I just wanted to point out some additions that we made to the language in the agreement. Provide protections for the local commitments that we have for existing programs and existing events that are community-wide and not just bringing it in, so they can't come in and bump something that has a contractual obligation or is so important or a perpetual event, especially like at the theater, that we don't kick something out that's important to the local community. So, I just wanted to point that out. That wasn't in the previous agreement. So, we added some protections for that as well.
Thank you, Jen. Is there any other board comment on this? Any public comment on this issue? Alright, seeing none, then I'll bring it back to the board.
I move to approve a cooperative agreement between Carson City, a consolidated municipality and political subdivision of the state of Nevada, and the Carson City Culture and Tourism Authority, a county fair and recreation board created by the city pursuant to NRS 244A for administrative services and faculty use and management, to be funded by 1% of the total 11% transient lodging tax rate, with the addition of the one sentence that was read into the record earlier.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. Alright, well, we are now on to item number 17, non-action items. City manager, anything to share with us?
Actually, I do. Sorry. Madam Mayor, pro temp, I just had to say that one time here this morning. If you could put my screen up here. Sorry, in addition to the mayor, we're going to get it up here in a second. My apologies. I didn't want to put it up too soon, but in addition to the mayor and Supervisor Bagwell being invited to the White House for a meeting tomorrow, which they are, and we're very hopeful that they're going to make some progress in getting support for our tiger grant for South Carson Street. In addition to that, the mayor was part of a select group tonight who was invited to bowl in the basement of the White House. So, for all the Big Lebowski aficionados out there, if you could take a look at President Nixon bowling, that's actually in the basement of the White House, and that's where our very own Mayor Crowell will be tonight bowling with the First Lady of Carson City as well. So, just wanted to share that with you.
Thank you. That's awesome.
Board members, anything to report or share?
No, but I'd just like to know where you got that picture.
I think that's great. Thank you. Well, we wish them well and hope for great success. If there's no other staff reports or any other comments, then I will move on to the last public comment for this meeting. I guess we are adjourned.
Good job.
Alright.